It's funny.
You mean to tell me you didn't listen to Matt and Hamilton's episode?
No, but I've been talking about his episode to everybody.
That was a great episode.
Yeah, especially the, I, I, I still use the grocery store timer.
Oh, yeah. No, but I, the steak one on one thing, like I told Allison, she's like, ooh, yeah, we gotta sign up for that. So have you been to steak one on one at locally local?
Not.
Oh, once a month he does this class and he spends three hours and goes through this encyclopedic process of steak. You have like samples of like eighteen different cuts.
Whoa.
Yeah, they end up with the spinalis cut, the backstrap, last of the eighteen, and that's Matt's favorite. But he, if you haven't listened to any McKinney podcast episodes, and I don't know if you have or haven't, like, we just released it. It had to be three weeks, three weeks ago and two weeks ago.
Had to be in two episodes.
It was an hour and twenty minute conversation.
Whoa.
So.
Did he bring samples?
No. No, that's what I was saying. I was so disappointed. It's like, Matt, where, where's our samples, buddy? Like, I need, I need, I need a little to go container of locally local.
Right, because it's just hearsay.
Yeah.
If you don't get to experience.
Oh, it's definitely not hearsay. I have been there, experienced firsthand. My, my wallet knows how much I like locally local. But that is, that's not, that's not this episode, because this is the McKinney podcast episode for Mr. Ken Usery. Yeah, not usery, but usery.
You and me.
Yeah.
Us.
There you go.
Us.
That's a great way to remember that.
You and me, usery.
Usery.
Man, that, well, that's not in a bumper sticker. It should be. Goodness.
Actually, the first time I ran for school board, that was my sign, was a big U S.
Hmm.
I'm running for usery.
Clever. I love that. Okay, so our episode, here's the roadmap, folks. Ken recently got elected to, was it place two?
Place two.
Place two for the McKinney School Board. Uh, Ken is a real estate agent here in McKinney. And the thing that is probably more unique as far as our episode flow goes is Ken is a life coach. And, uh, I don't know if you are licensed professional counsel, but you certainly act as a counselor and life coach. Uh, we'll get into some of that.
Okay.
Uh, after the, the background and the, you know, how'd you get to this point in life? How does this chapter Fred? Hit him with that first question that you like to ask, when your feet hit the ground.
When your feet first touched the earth, where was it? Where were you born?
Was born in Irving, Texas.
He's a North Texas boy, born and raised.
Native.
There you go.
Oh, yeah.
Native.
So I'm a multi-generational McKinney family.
Very cool.
So that goes back to the mid eighteen hundreds.
Wow.
So just let us know right off the bat, why is McKinney better than Irving?
Oh, how many, how long do we have? For all reasons.
We don't have.
School district is one.
That's right. And we don't have earthquakes, right? Because they have earthquakes there.
What is it with earthquakes? The only place in all of North Texas that has earthquakes.
Right?
Oh, my gosh. Yeah, we don't need to buy earthquake insurance in McKinney. That's, we're starters there, Fred. That's right. Okay, well, how did you go from Irving to McKinney? Like, there's a lot of years involved. Um, tell, tell a story. How'd you end up in McKinney?
Old, is that, oh, wait, a lot of years?
Well, yeah, I mean.
Okay, God.
Um, I didn't mean that how it came out.
Yeah.
Let's recover, James.
You know, maybe he just appears mature. He just appears mature.
As my grandfather said, you earn your silver and gray. You earn it. And I think that's a really wise statement. Yeah. So anytime I see silver and gray, I just assume that they've earned it.
You know what? I have five kids and five grandkids. I have definitely earned every gray hair.
Wow.
There you go. And you still have hair, so that's.
Not a lot.
Yeah, but you know.
I did have more.
You know, it can turn gray as long as it don't turn loose.
Well, yeah, yeah, well, it's done both.
But hey, he knows how to, he knows how to quaff the receding hairline to still look great.
He is definitely one of our most stylish guests.
All nice, y'all are so.
I'm telling you, man.
Definitely one of our most stylish guests.
Well, appreciate that.
Yeah. Okay, so you, your family is from McKinney.
Yeah.
You're born in Irving. How's that happen? How do you, how do you get back to McKinney?
So my family lived in Irving, uh, before I was born for several years. My dad had a job there. And, um, then when I came along, I, I guess I was expensive. I don't, I don't know. So, um, he decided, uh, he had a brother who had a CPA office downtown McKinney. And my dad was also a CPA. So they decided that they were going to combine forces and it would be usery and usery CPA office. So we moved to McKinney and my dad joined his brother downtown McKinney and had their accounting office.
Love it.
Yeah. My cousin, uh, Travis still has that office.
Your cousin?
He's still a CPA.
Cause that's the first, that's the only other usery I know.
Yeah.
It's a fairly unique name. I assume there was some kind of family relationship.
But y'all don't look alike, though.
That's funny, because some people say we look just alike and then others say we don't. So.
Hmm.
Anyway, that he's in the same location as our dad's had back in the sixties.
No kidding?
Yeah, so.
That's awesome.
So the CPA bug, you, you avoided that?
I have an accounting degree because I didn't have an option.
Okay.
So do you, do you have memories of before McKinney or were your parents, did your parents move back here when you were young enough?
No, I was a year.
Okay, so you don't know anything other than McKinney?
Yeah, well, so, long story, but.
I love a long story. Let's go.
We moved to Greenville. Uh, that's where I went to junior high and high school.
Okay.
So my dad decided he was going to branch out and do his own CPA office. And so there wasn't a whole lot of those private offices in Greenville. So he opened up his own accounting firm in Greenville. So we moved there and that's where I went to junior high and high school. And then I moved back to McKinney in eighty-three.
Gotcha. So as soon as you had a say in things, you moved back to McKinney where you wanted to be?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
But back in eighty-three, would you, McKinney wasn't the bustling burp that it is now.
Oh, gosh, no.
We were more ten.
Well, we had a Dairy Queen.
Yeah.
And a Steffy's that had the best corn dogs ever.
Steffy's, where was Steffy's?
Uh, where, um, the barbecue place is.
Hutchins?
Hutchins, yeah.
Right off of three eighty, Tennessee and three eighty?
Tennessee and three eighty. Yep, I thought that. It was called Steffy's. Best corn dogs.
Wow, I've never even heard of Steffy's.
For that here in McKinney.
Huh, really?
Population was about fifteen thousand, right? Give or take?
Give her twelve, fifteen, yeah.
Wow.
Man.
I was born.
It has grown.
I was born in eighty-four in Longview and, yeah, we, uh, just thinking of McKinney in the eighties is hard for me. Cause the, we moved, we moved to DFW in twenty twelve and it started, I opened our business in McKinney in twenty sixteen. So before twenty sixteen, like, all I have of pre twenty sixteen McKinney is stories and obviously pictures and whatnot. But when that, gosh, I'm so jealous, that kind of history, to see that kind of evolution of the city that my family and I have come to just adore. Like, I don't think we'll ever leave McKinney. I freaking love it here. I honestly can't think of a good reason.
Why would you? Yeah.
It's the best.
It's an amazing place.
Of the places to live in DFW.
Yeah.
I haven't found a better spot than McKinney. And of the places to live and work in the country, I mean, vacation in Colorado, vacation in Virginia Beach, vacation in San Diego, California. But why would you live somewhere else? We have an amazing airport, great food, great business climate, friendly, you know, taxation. I mean, you have McKinney.
Amazing schools.
Amazing schools, obviously.
That's right. And school board.
But, I mean, McKinney is the best city in the best region of the country. So it's like best of the best.
Totally agree.
No, people that want to complain about growth is like, how could you be surprised there's growth? Any smart person wants to be here. When they complain about traffic, it's like, you know what traffic means? It means success.
Yeah.
It means your city is growing. It means, it means the people are attracted to your city. That's a good thing. We have to work on infrastructure, obviously. City council has their hands full, city staff. It's like, the people that complain about growth is like, oh, well, I wish it was still twenty thousand people. Like, I was when I moved here, it was like. No, no, you don't. You really, I know you think you do, but like twelve thousand people? Do you wish McKinney was still twelve thousand people?
Where, where did you live? Where did you live back in eighty-three?
So we lived, uh, very far west McKinney, which is, uh.
At that time was.
Post Stadium.
That was west.
Oh, my gosh, yes. Yeah. So we lived right there. It was called Belden Circle. It's right there by Ron Poe Stadium. And that's.
What is Ron Poe Stadium?
Which is east of seventy-five. It's east of seventy-five, yeah. White, it's White Street.
Yes.
Oh, that's Ron Poe Stadium? The old, the old stadium right there?
Just cruise down, cruise down Red Bud. Can't miss it.
That was West McKinney?
Yeah. Yeah. So our, funny story, I remember when we built the Jack in the Box that's on three eighty and seventy-five. There's, there's a Jack in the Box right there. So that used to be the only thing that was there. And it was so far out there. And I remember people saying, why would you build a restaurant that far away from town?
And now, now.
It's a Jack in the Box.
Independence is the western edge of McKinney.
Right.
Another five miles.
Custer, one, one block before that.
Well, yeah, but the, the West Ridge area, like, West Ridge and Independence is the far western. Cause I mean, technically, you have, you have parts of, you have parts of McKinney that go all the way to Coit. You've got, you've got the Prestwick neighborhood that goes to Coit.
Yeah.
So I got, sorry, Coit is the western edge.
It is. Isn't that insane?
That's it. That's insane.
It's insane. So let me back up just a little bit, because eighty-three, no, when I was a kid, so in the sixties and seventies, that's when we lived, Belden Circle.
Hmm.
Thereabout, that, that was far west.
Before junior high.
Before junior high, yeah. So in eighty-three, that's when I bought my first house here in McKinney. And it's, it was called Seville Estates. Um.
Mm-hmm.
Now you get there going down Eldorado Parkway and, you know, so Eldorado Parkway didn't exist, you know, back then. So I had to go down one twenty-one, which was a two lane highway. And then there was a back entrance down what's now Harden. Where the football stadium is now, one twenty-one. So that was just a rock road is all that that was. It was a one lane rock road and it had trees that covered it. So it was like a tree tunnel that you drove underneath. And so that's how I got to my house, because there was no Eldorado Parkway, there was no other venue or any other street, any, to get out there. And then, um, so that's, yeah, Seville Estates.
I just, I love these stories.
First house paid ninety-two thousand dollars for it, which, and, and, you know, in my, in my twenties, you know? I thought, man, how will I ever pay off ninety-two thousand? It's almost a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah.
And I'm going to pay that for a house? Why? You know, and the interest rate was like fourteen percent, which I thought was a great deal.
Because the eighties, man.
You know, yeah.
Okay, so catch us up to current day, because we, we want to spend a lot of time in current, Ken, and what you've been up to recently and obviously school board and everything. Catch us up from, from there. You buy your first house in the eighties. What'd you spend the next thirty years doing in town? Like, bullet point, bullet point it for us.
Ministry.
Okay.
Um, so I was on staff, um, at, uh, it was first Baptist Fairview, which is now Cottonwood Creek.
Okay.
So I was there for ten years. Um, went through some life changes and as a result of life changes, I ended up on staff at First Baptist McKinney. So I was there for another ten-ish, ten, twelve years.
Okay.
Um, and then I just did kind of some freelancing, um, music stuff along the way and ended up, uh, getting my real estate license and doing real estate.
Okay.
Uh, got a master's in psychology with an emphasis in marriage and family and became a certified life coach about twenty years ago or so. And so started doing life coaching and helping with blending families primarily. So, yeah.
That's a calling, man.
Just all right here.
Oh.
Wow.
It's a calling.
Fred, where do you want to go with that? Let's hit him with a couple of questions and then talk about school board and current evolution.
There are so many things that you just, you just shared right there. So you're on, you're, you're, you're on staff. So were you bivocational at that point or were you just on staff?
No, just on staff.
Just on staff. So you're living the very humble life. A very humble life. Thus, thus.
You don't make a lot in the ministry.
Thus, thus the, playing the instrument thing, right? So what did you play?
Uh, so piano.
Piano.
Trumpet, organ. Uh, so I, but I accompanied our students here in McKin, I mean, going back to early eighties, I started playing the piano.
So you were the U I L guy, huh?
I was the U I L guy. Yeah. And I did, of course, we only had one high school back then. So I played for all of our high school band and choir students. We didn't have an orchestra program back in those days. But, uh, so I played for all the junior high and high school band and choir students and.
Love it.
So it's. And as we added schools, I played for those schools as well, so.
So it was, it was somewhere in there while you're tickling the ivory that you're like, you know, I'm going to go psychology? How did that, how did that come into play?
I got a divorce, so. And I was really trying to figure me out. And so I ended up going and getting my master's degree in psychology. And, uh, you know, I'm just, I'm one of those people where other people have always felt comfortable coming and talking to me.
So, so rather than paying for counseling, you paid for a college degree?
Yeah, right. Yeah, to try to figure myself out. And I, I still have, yeah, I'm still trying to figure that part out. But anyway, um, but yeah, you know, I just, I've, I've always been a good listener. And so, um, but you know, as people would bring me their problems and stuff, I, I would think, I don't know, I don't know how to help them. I don't know what to say. I don't, you know? But I wanted to. So, um, I really never wanted to have like a full-time counseling office. I just wanted to know how to help people.
Mm-hmm.
So I got the degree in psychology with an emphasis in marriage and family, because that was where people were hurting the most. So, yeah.
And so then you, you, that was your, that was your income then? That was your business? You were, you were a family counselor?
Well, I was still in ministry.
With ministry, it sounds like.
Yeah, I mean, my, my, my office at the church became also a counseling. Yeah, First McKinney.
Yeah.
Uh, in fact, well, at that time, First McKinney, we developed a counseling center there on, on site. And so I'd go over to the counseling center and work with church members primarily, uh, with their situation.
Because of the age of that campus, First McKinney has, has a huge benefit of flexibility with dirt. Like, the amount of land that the church owns that's right there contiguous is like, man, there's a lot of flexibility there. So many churches have a little plot, they build a building and that's it.
And that's it.
Because, I mean, when, by the time they build the church, like, they're already boxed in because of all the other development. But First McKinney has been exactly where they sit for well over a hundred years. And it's like.
No, so we know we were downtown McKinney. So when I, when I was a little boy, our church was located on Church Street, the corner of Church and going into town, Louisiana.
That's right.
Where the Don Mitchell Park is.
That's, my bad, yeah.
Yeah, so that was, that was First Baptist. It was a three-story building, had a basement.
I forgot that.
So my first memory is that basement. That's where the nursery was. And so I remember, yeah.
So they, but they've been at the current location for.
Since the late seventies.
Really?
And it, it was a, it was a, it was a challenge for the church to make that decision.
Wow.
To move from downtown McKinney, because where it's located now, again, that was, that was way out there. You know, it's like, why would you build a church way out there?
Because they didn't even, they didn't even have seventy-five as a, as a US highway until, until well into the eighties and nineties, right? Like, seventy-five wasn't even a four-lane road until the mid nineties.
No, no, it was, it was.
Was it, was it early nineties?
Two both ways. It had a median.
In the eighties?
In the, in the eighties, yeah. I would say probably it was seventies.
Okay.
That happened, yeah.
I'm only going off of pictures that I've seen from down in Dallas, where in the late fifties, early sixties.
Oh, Highway Five.
It's just empty.
Yeah, well, I mean, it's, it's seventy-five, like where seventy-five was getting built in the late fifties, early sixties, down in like, actual like city of Dallas, Dallas. Like, south of six thirty-five.
Right.
Like Forest Lane and seventy-five area. So it's, yeah, I guess I made a bit of an assumption there. It's like, well, surely they wouldn't make it all the way up to McKinney in a, in a decade. I guess I was wrong.
Uh, yeah, I would say probably late sixties, early seventies.
Wow.
Seventy-five.
So they just went nuts building roads back then, huh?
Yeah, because that, back then, I mean, the only way you got to Dallas was Highway Five.
Yeah.
So that was the vein.
The road that takes, takes a while to get down there and runs by seven different names in the span of twenty miles.
Yeah.
That's right.
From McDonald to Greenville.
Avenue K.
Avenue K to whatever it's, uh, yeah, it's, what are we doing here, guys?
Yeah.
Then switches back to Greenville.
It does, yeah.
What on earth?
That's an interesting road.
Is there any other road in our area? I don't know if there's any other road in our area that goes by so many different names with the same piece of, of, of concrete and asphalt.
Well.
I mean, Preston Road, all the way up into, you know, north of Gunner is, is Preston Road the whole way up. So.
Unless you talk to the old folk and then they call it what?
Five eighty-nine?
Two eighty-nine?
Two eighty-nine, yeah.
You know?
Well, I mean, Highway three eighty.
Yeah.
It's McDonald, it's university.
Yeah.
Yeah, McDonald.
Yeah, McDonald's North is five, it's north, south.
That's right.
I'm, I'm going to call a flag on myself. I led us down a path we shouldn't be on, because I, I made the mistake of the.
History of McKinney is always fair. It's always fair.
It's rich.
It's really interesting.
Rich. I, I gotta tell you this one story really fast.
I love it, yeah.
Okay, so downtown McKinney, um, the Ritz Building, you know where the Ritz is? So that used to be a movie theater.
Really?
Yeah, that, so originally that was a movie, that was the McKinney Movie Theater.
Hmm.
Um, my mom and dad went to the original McKinney Boyd High School on Caldwell, which, which is Caldwell Elementary School now.
Mm-hmm.
So that was the original McKinney Boyd High School.
Like, right off of Virginia, Louisiana?
Louisiana.
Louisiana.
Yeah.
That was the high school.
That was a.
Caldwell Elementary.
Elementary, yeah.
Used to be the high school.
That was the high school. That was, yeah, it was a different building, but that's, that was the location.
Wow.
So that was the original McKinney Boyd High School. So anyway, my parents went to school there. Well, my dad wanted to take my mom on a date and their parents wouldn't allow them. So they skipped school one time.
Oh.
And they wa, I know, right?
Yeah, because you just have to walk down the road.
From McKinney Boyd to the square and went to the movies. This was in nineteen forty-six.
Wow.
And they, they went to the movie there.
So what, so what you're saying is.
That's where my life started, actually.
Yeah, whoever was running the ticket booth turned a blind eye to two high schoolers coming in in the middle of a school day to go to the movies.
To go to the movies.
How about that? So the Ritz?
The Ritz.
That's the best kind of truancy.
That's amazing. I'm gonna have to walk into that building and look around and say, you know, where could, you know, the theater have been in this?
Well, all those little stores and stuff obviously weren't there, right?
Sure, but you know.
It was only a one.
The shell of the building.
Yeah.
You said that's where my life began. You snuck that one in there. Is that where your life began?
That's where my parents, you know, started their life.
Wow.
If it wasn't for that date, I wouldn't exist, right?
That's where, that's where the imagination.
Okay.
The imagination.
Cause I was like, you mean literally that's where your life began? Like, you were conceived in the Ritz Building? Oh, my gosh, kid, that's amazing.
Maybe mentally.
This will become our number one podcast episode. People tune in. When people tune in, they're like.
Sorry, James went literal, but he should have been figurative. It's like, wow, Mr. and Mrs. Usery, okay.
Right?
Oops. This, this will be the only, the hashtag only Ken.
Oh, man. No, I, we don't, it's, it's a family podcast, so I hesitate to ever say anything that sounds even a little risque.
Yeah, let's, let's clean it up.
No, no, you're good.
Okay, so, you know, but back to, so you are, you are accompanying, you are counseling, you're still at the church and somewhere in there, you're like, you know, I could do real estate. How did that, how did that come into the mix?
So I was on staff at First Baptist McKinney and I decided it was time to retire. So I retired from the ministry, but I still had bills to pay.
Yes.
So it's like, and, and real estate was, you know, good at the time, so.
Wait, what year was this?
Oh, uh, twenty.
Okay, I was, you know, because.
Ten, twenty.
I'm still, I'm still thinking, you know, late eighties.
Okay, so this was, this was. I was trying to figure out if it was pre-crash or post-crash.
That's, that's where I was.
Like the two thousand eight, two thousand nine.
It was right, literally right after that.
So you got to ride the wave back up.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Awesome.
It's been a great.
That's the best time to get into real estate is right at the bottom.
Perfect.
But we, we have cycled since then.
Oh, yeah.
We have, we have.
Yeah, I mean, there's, you know, there's.
But there hasn't been anything quite that.
Here in North Texas, we really do. We've got this real estate bubble that's so bizarre. You know, you hear the stories around the nation and all the other things going on. It's like.
We're insulated.
Yeah, it was like.
None of that happened here. North Texas has a bubble, but then it's got like a, a lower bubble that, you know, it's like a leveled down, because we, we were living in Florida, you know, during, during the previous one. And I watched my across the street neighbor's house go from on par with mine, then he sold it for three times what it was worth. And then the people who bought it were all of a sudden so far in the hole.
Oh, wow.
And I was like, you paid how much for this house? And then they sold it, you know, so I, we just watched that. The whole time I just like, let's just hang on to our house. So I watched the value of our home like skyrocket. And then I realized, if I sold it, I couldn't buy my house back. So like, let's just stay where we are. But, so, interesting. So, okay, so you get into real estate and then one day you're looking around and going, school board. How does that come into play?
Well, because I was so involved in the school district anyway. I was accompanying, you know, at, at that point, then we had, we had three high schools, we had five middle schools, we had twenty-four. Well, we were building elementary schools during that time. But, so I ended up accompanying kids in, on, on all the campuses. And so I was involved. I knew the faculty really well. I knew the administration very well. Um, I became, I was on the strategic planning team to open McClure Elementary School. So I.
In twenty-ten.
In twenty-ten.
Yeah, that's where my kids go.
How about that?
So I was on the, on the team to open that. Um, I was on the Community Action Network team for the district. I ended up doing, I was the co-chair of the bond, uh, the pack that passed the bond in twenty sixteen that built the stadium and, you know, all that. So I co-chaired that, that pack. Um, so I was, you know, I had done that, um.
Meanwhile, you're just stacking up these skills and stacking up these relationships.
Right, yeah.
And building the social capital.
Well, and just, I was just so deeply involved in the district. And then, um, Bobby Amick was on the, he was one, an attorney in town and he was on the school board. And he just, he'd been on the school board for two or three terms, I think. And he decided it was time to step down and it was place two. And so because I was so deeply involved in the district, there were a lot of people who said, why don't you do it? I mean, because you're, you do all the things anyway. Oh, okay, why not? So, you know, why not? Um, so I did, I ran and got elected to the school board back then. And, um, then I stepped off the school board for a time. And now, uh, Philip Hassler took my place, um, on the school board. And then now Philip decided that he wanted to step down because of his business expanding. And I had a lot of people come to me and said, Kenneth, why don't you?
Round two, baby.
Why don't you get back on the school board?
Let's go.
Oh, okay. Uh, because, I mean, I love our district so much and, uh, I, I believe in it. I believe in our kids, I believe in our faculty, um, I believe in our community. And it's just, it's a natural fit for me just to serve in that capacity. So I was happy to submit my name again.
Makes sense.
Lo and behold, I got elected.
And judging, judging from the results of the election, the people of McKinney in place two were perfectly happy to have you back.
That's right.
Which means you did a good job the first time.
Yeah, well, I, I, you know, I hope so, you know? I mean.
Voters have long memories in McKinney.
Yes.
They don't forget. If you're a scumbag, they will remember it.
Remember that, yeah.
If, if you do things that fly in the face of what the voters want, and I mean, at, at its core, it is representation. Cause we're a constitutional republic. We're not a democracy. You don't invite every citizen to sound off on whatever the issue is. We have elected representatives. And it's the, love George, love him, not going to say anything against George. George is a huge personality as mayor and he's about to be done as mayor, you know, the runoff is almost over with, as we record this.
Two days.
Two days and we'll know. The, the idea of a celebrity kind of persona is uncommon. And I think it should be uncommon. There's nothing wrong with a George Fuller every once in a while. He's certainly been a great mayor in my estimation. But the whole point is you're representing your constituents. It's almost like your voice should be a conduit for their voice. And these people that are super outspoken about their opinion and what they want to do is like, I think you're kind of missing the point a little bit. You are supposed to be a conduit for the collective opinions of the people that live in the district that you represent, whether it's place two, district three, whatever you want to call it. It's like, I, I love hearing that because it tells me that your head's in the right place and you, you, you have a big personality, but I've also seen you be incredibly humble. And, and you recognize, obviously, that your job is to represent the opinions of your constituents.
Can, can I use the word nonpartisan? Can we go ahead and throw that out there right now?
Please.
Go ahead.
Of all of your constituents, not just people that vote one political party.
Thank you, yes. So on the school board, just like our city, um, it is not partisan.
That's right.
We represent everyone. And when I was campaigning, I would say, our children are not Republicans and Democrats. Our children are children now. And I do, I represent them all. And they come from so many different backgrounds and, you know, um, and, and that's hard to navigate.
Yeah.
Right? Because at the end of the day, you do have to make decisions.
Yeah.
And, and the decisions are not gonna be pleasing to everyone. But you do have to consider
Yep.
all of the options and then make the best decision. Right?
Okay, so speaking of that, and let's, let's, we're gonna go backwards and forwards on this. The McKinney Stadium. You were on the PAC, that was what, twenty sixteen? And the stadium was built in?
Two years later.
Twenty eighteen?
Trying to remember, you know, that was, we were, we were.
Two years later.
You know, it opened in twenty eighteen.
Yeah, we were, you know, we live, you know, like west, west McKinney, Craig Ranch area.
Practically Frisco.
Yeah.
Are you even McKinney, bro?
Friskiny.
Friskiny?
McRisco.
It's weird how those lines are.
But yeah, so, but, but watching all of the headlines about the stadium.
Oh, man.
So you were pro-stadium and there were a lot of people who were anti-stadium and they, they took to the streets about that. But now looking back, I mean, that's what, nine years ago now that you, you know, twenty sixteen to twenty twenty five now. Does, does anybody even question the fact that we have a stadium or does, or, cuz my experience is people are like, we have this amazing stadium. Nobody is going back to the, that's gonna raise our taxes, all, all of that, you know, and I'm, I'm not.
By the way, it didn't.
No, exactly, yeah.
Yeah, because, you know, cuz it was a bond.
Right.
A tax. And so, you know, but there, there are people that still, every so often, I see the argument. And I saw it during this last round of, in, in the mayoral race about, you know, and people would say, you know, tell me you don't understand taxes without telling me you don't understand taxes. But looking back now, you were pro-stadium back then. And we have the stadium now. You know, as the, as the school, as the district, school-wise grows and we see that we, we need to build more facilities in certain areas, do you see us having a need for another major capital campaign of that nature? And would you be on board for a second stadium?
Oh, that, you wanna ask me that question?
Bro, that is.
Come on.
That is really early. That's like, hey, Ken, let me help you out here. He didn't mean it.
No, I didn't mean it.
That question, that question's probably a decade early.
Well, I'm, so I'm gonna answer your question.
Well, actually, let, let, let me.
I'm gonna answer.
Yeah, but let me preface that with, we have, we have a community, begins with a P, rhymes with prosper, near us, right?
Right.
And they're talking about building another stadium.
Yeah.
Already?
Yes.
Oh, come on, Prosper?
They are, so.
They're like this big.
Yeah, right, well, well, they have, how many high schools now? Two, three?
Three.
They have three?
Walnut Grove, Prosper and.
Rock Hill.
Rock Hill, yeah.
Yeah.
So they have three, three large.
The school district is bigger than the city by like fifty percent.
Yeah.
And so they're talking.
Geographically.
Because they live in McKinney.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's right, you know, it's, we're not even talking about that, but, you know, but just knowing that, I mean, Allen built their stadium and McKinney all of a sudden has stadium. People are like, oh, we're just trying to keep up. And then Prosper built their stadium. But then Prosper was like, we need a second stadium. And of course, I did the same exact thing. I was like, y'all have three high schools. It's like, why would you need a second stadium?
Whole city is like forty thousand citizens.
Yeah, McKinney Cares group is forty thousand citizens.
The group that you and I admin on Facebook has more people than Prosper.
Right, that's funny. I was talking with some people in the, in the Prosper ISD. I don't know if they actually live in Prosper, but they were gung ho. And I just sat there, you know, I had my neutral face on, like I try to do. And I was like, okay, that's interesting, but you know, from your perspective and, and of course, you know, for our audience, this is not a commitment on, you know.
Thank you.
School board member usery saying, you know, you know.
We promise our guests no gotcha questions. And then you lay the mother of all gotcha questions on it.
So I wanna say this. So I co-chaired the PAC that passed the bond, right? And yeah, a hot topic was the, uh, what was the stadium? And it's really funny because as the co-chair of the PAC, then I'm the one who took all the, the hits, right?
Yeah.
As people were very unhappy with all that. So, I mean, I was called every name in the book and, I mean, you know, it got wild and crazy. Here's the funny thing, nine years later, they love the stadium. I mean, some of the same people
That's right.
who said some amazing things to me that weren't all that nice, you know, now just are like, oh, man, we, you know, we're so proud of, of our stadium.
Do you ever get any of them being honest enough to be like, you know, I was wrong about this project?
I don't think I've ever gotten an apology, but, but it's like, I don't want, I don't even want an apology, you know, I don't even want that.
Cause I, I'm gonna be in McKinney for thirty or forty years. At some point, I'm gonna have to run for something.
Yeah, right.
I'm, yeah, it's, I, I always like asking that question. It's like, when people realize that they gave you a lot of harsh comments, unjustified.
Yeah.
Was like, they were wrong. It was like, does it ever come back around where someone's like, you know, this project ain't bad after all? Cause I kinda feel that way about the amphitheater, where twenty-five thousand seat concert and event venue. Definitely feel that way about the JW Marriott that just got announced finally. And it's like, and all these people are like, we don't need this, brab, 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 brab. It's like.
Yeah, you took some heat on that post.
I took a lot of heat on that post.
I read that.
I'm just like.
I was like, man.
Guys, it's not me saying this. It's, it's not my opinion. It's the opinion of Aaron Warner, the director of Visit McKinney. I heard it straight from his mouth that we have a drastic shortage of hotel capacity during high traffic weekends like TMR. This weekend, we're gonna have a hotel shortage, you know, when we have arts and bloom, when we have Oktoberfest, we have Christmas stuff. And we have big events like the D two national championship. Thousands of people go to Allen and Frisco and, and even Plano to sleep in a hotel. Because McKinney doesn't have enough hotel beds to support the venues.
And conf- conference space.
And conference and event space.
So hurting.
When I saw the JW Marriott, it's gonna have fifty thousand square feet of conference ballroom space. And you can open all those partitions up.
Right.
And we're gonna be able to put a thousand people in a ballroom. It's like, apologies to the Marriott on seventy-five and Allen. But you guys just lost a good amount of business to the JW Marriott in McKinney.
Yeah.
Cuz all, the hug gala was at Allen's Marriott Ballroom.
Yeah.
The, the number of times I have been in that facility in Allen, when the room was full of McKinney people who drove to Allen, I was just like, oh, this drives me nuts.
Yeah.
Why, hotel developers?
Yeah.
Build us one of these in McKinney, please. And what do you know, we finally got one.
Yeah.
Sorry, that, that's totally sidetracked. For, you were headlining a major capital project. The support, you were involved in all the city leadership, in staff with, you know, Paul Grimes was here at that point. No, he wasn't. He cut here in seven, in sixteen or seventeen. He was just on the tail end.
Yeah.
Yeah. It was like, you're in the middle of liaising with all of these people in all these meetings. And you're the face of the support for the stadium. And do you regret any of that?
Oh, gosh, no.
Are you proud of being, having that be part of your legacy?
Percent, yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
I, I would do it all over again, uh, if the need were to arise. But.
Hypothetically.
Hypothetically.
Not actually Fred.
You, you heard if the need.
If the good people of McKinney.
You know, so one of the selling points though of our stadium is, is the conference center.
Yeah.
Uh, that's on one end of, of the.
The south end of the field.
Yeah, the south end of the field.
Yeah.
And, and people begin to buy into that because we needed it here. And that was before.
What's the capacity in there, do you know?
It's, uh, five hundred, I think.
That's a good capacity though.
And that's tight around tables.
But I mean, four hundred comfy? Three fifty, four hundred?
Yeah.
I totally forget about that location.
Yeah.
That's a good event space.
You open up all those, you know, all those spaces.
Yeah.
Um, so anyway, it's an incredible space, has a beautiful view of the field.
Everybody, every, every event I've worked in there, ultimately, people are out on the balcony, getting pictures with the field in the background.
Absolutely.
And, you know, we just, we just had Corey Homer in here and he talked about the first three nights, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, right after the stadium opened.
Cause he managed it.
That's right. And the crush to get in there. And I just think, you know, we are Texas, we are football. And there's nothing like those Friday, oh, Thursday, Friday or Saturday night lights or Saturday daylights.
That's right.
And, you know what, when we think about, you know, and you, you made this point back during Corey's, Corey's, uh, episode that we're not just educating, we are, you know, pouring into the lives of the future of McKinney. And, you know, that stadium, whether you are for it or against it back in the day, is a shining point of our community.
Indeed.
And, you know, people love to attend events there and not just football events, you know, cuz we also, you know, when our sons were marching in Frisco ISD schools, one of the competitions, major competitions was there in the, in the McKinney Stadium. And, you know, that was, you know, and I just wanna give a big old shout out to Travis Treadwell, who at that point was coordinating that whole event. And, you know, what a phenomenal facility.
Yes.
That stadium is.
You know, it, this reminds me, as I'm talking about, you know, controversial things with football stadiums, have you ever had any concrete issues with the stadium? I, I, totally unrelated question. I'm not thinking of anybody else's stadiums in the immediate vicinity.
Begins with A.
May or may not have had, you know, a, a huge, tens of millions of dollars worth of challenges.
Basically rebuilding two times over.
Yeah, you know what?
Begins with A, rhymes with Allen.
Begins with U, ends with Lynn, you know. We haven't had any concrete issues with our stadium, have we? No? Okay, just, just checking, totally unrelated question.
You don't want me to answer that, right?
No, yeah, I'm telling you.
We, we had a little delay getting into the stadium.
Yeah.
But.
But I mean, after the stadium opens, you know, a year or two after, where, where giant cracks are discovered, we have to close the stadium.
We at least discovered them prior.
Yeah.
To that.
Oh, my gosh.
Which in Texas is not unrealistic, given, given the conditions that we're under. But, you know, at the same time, you know, kudos to you. And I'm certain that the Porsche and Subaru dealerships that are just, just a little.
Service center. It's a Porsche service center.
That's right. But yeah, but you know, driving by there, it sure looks real nice from the highway.
Right?
It does.
It does. And then add to it the Sperry Performing Arts Center, because that was part of the same bond.
That's right.
And I'm equally as proud of that. That's an incredible.
Where is that? I haven't been in there.
At McKinney High School.
Okay.
So it's the Performing Arts Center.
Gotcha.
There at McKinney High School. It is top notch.
So we're gonna, are we gonna rename that high school to the?
Oh, sorry.
Neil and Lynn Sperry.
High School.
High School.
I tell you, the Sperrys, they are amazing people.
They are.
Amazing.
If you ever get to meet them.
So much.
If they're gonna be somewhere, you gotta meet them.
Well, we, we wouldn't have Serenity High if it wasn't for the Sperrys.
That's right.
And look at all the, the students who have, yeah, turned their life around.
That's right.
As a result of Serenity.
And, you know, we're gonna have.
And lots of great crepe myrtles.
That too.
This, uh, this summer, we're, we're really focusing hard on this summer, uh, getting educators in. You know, last year we had two of the three valedictorians, uh, of the three high schools. And we wanna do that again this summer for sure. Uh, we definitely wanna do that again.
Go back and hear their speeches.
Yeah.
That, that they did at graduation, all three of the high school valedictorians. I mean, their speeches were incredible, all of them.
Okay.
Amazing speeches.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna do things a little bit differently this year cuz we have, obviously, we have July, uh, that, you know, July eleventh is our recording day. And we, we would love to be able to get those kids in. Uh, but this year, we're gonna, we're gonna do our very best to include the valedictorian of Serenity as well, whoever they are. Um, if they even do valedictorians at Serenity, I'm not sure if they do. Um, how does that?
We, we graduated four students.
It's that small? Oh, I had no idea. I'm ignorant. I'm sorry, I'm, I'm ignorant. I didn't know what the body was there.
Well, I mean, you know, it depends on.
On the year.
The year and the semester and all that. But, uh, but this, this year, the end of this year, we, we graduated four.
I had no idea it was that small. I apologize.
Yeah.
So we won't do that.
Beautiful stories though, oh, my word.
We'll get the leadership.
But we could have, we could have a graduate from there.
I'm down for anything. Yeah, it depends on who we can get connected with. It all depends on the listeners and folks that we're able to get, you know, to answer the phone and get someone on.
We know a influential, easily approachable school board member that could, you know, put in a word for us.
Help you out.
Yeah, we'll talk later. We'd love to have Serenity represented in the interviews that we do this, uh, this July, um, and a month from now, so.
Awesome.
Um, as, I mean, we're basically at the end.
Yeah, no, we didn't even get to the, you didn't get to the counseling side of things.
I know.
You have to have him back.
We will definitely have to have you back, yeah. We're really trying to focus in our second year of having more bite-sized conversations